I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, our mission statement?
At Richland Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Roll call?
Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Alani?
Here.
Board member Teltum?
Here.
Board member Bartel?
Here.
Board member Sutton?
Here.
Board member Mashanna's absent with notice. And I am board member Fortuno. We have a forum. We also have present our student representatives, Elizabeth Schaefer and Joseph Muzio.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear me not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent move.
Second? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Wombsley?
In your packet you'll see all the new hires and appointments we've had. We've had some resignations that fell. Some of these were prior to that. We've already filled some of the positions. To date, our only open position as of today is a speech in language. It was offered to the position, but we're just waiting for them to respond back. But we officially hired a high school math teacher today.
That's something.
We start on Wednesday. And we have the English language artist that was hired, she started today at the middle school. And there were no questions regarding the minutes.
Okay, anyone else?
Actually, I have another question. I noticed that we have a new position, the knitting and sewing advisor position. That sounds exciting.
There were several middle school principals, Mr. Knight brought to our attention last year, clubs that are interested, that kids are interested in. And he has advisors, people coming to them. There's the official writers' club, the knitting and sewing club, and there is, there's one more under on the blank. But it's all falls within the budget that we allocate for the schedule Bs for middle schools. Just as a reminder, in the contract, there's an additional schedule B that's there that we negotiated several years ago that allows us to be able to put clubs in that are for students.
So, nothing was taken away, huh?
No.
Was that it? I guess, just making a little clarification, because I did notice that there was one staff member that they turned in their keys at the end of the day. And what is the protocol when somebody does that without any sort of a notice? Do we...
The general practice, the general practice is to, you have a new buyer.
Right.
I can't make anybody do that. And so this is a Monday, turn the keys at the end of the day. So what we do, and from the central office, we'll follow up with the administrators, make sure badges are turned off and everything that the district has issued to that staff member, not topic, etc., is all returned and made recover. It's not ideal.
Right. Does the central office contact them all and kind of get a rundown to the line, or is it just kind of stepped out at that level and went out of the way?
It's not an automatic, the central office, depending on the situation. If there's something specific that we do follow up, if there's something that the administrators might have more knowledge of, or have more information, then when we get that, we do fill it.
Anybody else? Brian and I apologize that I didn't look at it, but for the minutes from September 9th, we have to change it. Kelly was listed as late of notice, and actually she was absent. Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our Blue Devil raves. Tracy?
Again, I just would like to rave about the crossing roofs that help students get across those very busy streets, especially in the madness of the construction that just took place. I know the two that work the main intersection here, you know, they have the beauty of a stoplight which can help and assist. But I particularly noticed the person, and I don't know her name, but the person who works at Grove Street at that crossing, she, you know, has to just step out in traffic and stop so that kids can walk across the street. And I think how brave she is. And I also have noticed, like, the first week of school, she was trying to get everybody to laugh and feel comfortable and complimenting kids. You could tell she was trying to do her part to make everybody feel better about walking to school. So, that's my rave.
Sandy?
Nope, not big tonight.
Danielle?
Good.
Candace?
Good.
Kelly? Okay, mine is a rave to Mr. Wombsley and Mr. Trent for the school safety presentation that they did last Monday. That was very well put together, very informative, and just thank you both for the hard work that it took to get that to come together. Thank you. Katie, our student board representative report. Whoever's going to go first?
I'll start us off. In terms of school in general, students, you know, get their footing as we're pushing through, lightly through the year. As for upcoming events, we'll start with the high school. We've got manufacturing day tours on Monday, September 30th, and Thursday, October 3rd. For those of you who want to wear manufacturing day as a chance that students get to have to work in a CTE-like field regarding engineering, computer programming, all those robot science-esque careers. And it's truly a great experience. I have been a part of it for a couple of years. Got to go, they've run a great show over there. We also partnered with two Macomb County businesses, which means that 65 total students will be able to participate in this event, which is truly really awesome to get that experience for our student body. Homecoming week's on its way, very busy week for sure. Information on spirit days, powder puff, bonfire parade, football and the dance are soon to come. For now, we have a game date, October 4th, and the dance is the day after that, October 5th, on the Saturday. There are still spots open for the spring break trip to Europe. A meeting about it will be on October 10th at 7:00 in room 200 here at the high school. And for our early college students, Macomb Community College is hosting dual enrollment information tonight on Wednesday, October 16th at 6:30 PM at Lorenzo Cultural Center, located at Center Campus.
For the middle school, as Mr. Wombsley mentioned, we have a new teacher on our day. Ms. Erin Lynn Sylwens, I hope I spelled that right. On Tuesday, September 24th, from 5:00 to 6:45, for two middle schools having their first annual parent empowerment. So, it sounds like staff will be offering 15-minute sessions on various topics, help support the family and stuff, and anyone's welcome to attend. And then the army of school group's teams have their first meetings this week, and next, as the middle school continues to improve our plans for student achievement success. And then elementary school-wise, they have 134 kids utilizing childcare, and they have more, I don't know what else to come up, and they've been utilizing the outdoor reset center. The fall social and fall field trips are approaching fast, and preschool's already planning a trip to Amay School in October. And then the farm lab is coming to Lee in October, and it brings agriculture to the classroom and shows students how to explore through handout experiences.
As for after-school events such as sports and whatnot, we've been kicking hard for sure, as usual, but the big event that occurred last week, Wednesday, the 18th, was a sportsmanship summit hosted by Alma that both Elizabeth and I attended. It was a very interesting experience. We were able to talk with our athletic director, Mr. Trent, and we're ready to kind of go over some monumental advancements for our sports programs, which is really awesome. The year tryouts started today, and then this upcoming Wednesday is the second day, Friday being the first day of practice. Middle school fall sports are underway with all their teams doing very well. This week volleyball plays at Yale on Monday and at home on Wednesday. Our football team plays against North Branch this week, and cross-country has an away meet at Albert Mac. Otherwise, on the students' behalf, pretty good so far, doing all right.
What's the play we're doing this time?
This year, we're doing Deadline. It's a kind of a goofy slash very hysterical type play. It's, a lot of people attended tryouts today, a lot of people gave it their best, super fun to work with everybody. Our directors, amazing and enthusiastic as always. It's going to be great, for sure. We're all super excited.
And it's the weekend before Thanksgiving, I think I heard?
Believe is our first show, opening night, yes.
Very good.
I think the basis is there's several writers that have come together to write a murder mystery, but they're brought there not knowing they're there to solve a murder mystery.
Yeah, it's a sure not to spoil it too much, but it'll definitely be great. We're excited.
Very excited.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Any questions? Carrie, going to move on to our superintendent and legislative report, Mr. Wombsley.
As board member Teltum mentioned, we had our first community conversations with the superintendent, and I do want to also thank Mr. Trent. A letter was sent home about, the letter went out at 6:30 tonight, as well as the two handouts that were passed out. When I checked, at literally 6:33, there were already 50 people that opened the letter that went out at 6:30. So, the communication we talked about that night definitely is getting out there. Our next one is October 21st. We are focusing on looking at local and state assessments, understanding what they are, the purposes, and how we use the data to inform instructions. We'll be talking about NWA, M-Step, PSAT, SAT, those type of things to help people have a different understanding of those assessments.
Is that at 6:30?
6:30 here in the high school media center. They're the third Monday of each week. Tomorrow is the, Macomb County School Board Association is hoping to see a forum. It is open, and other people in the community are interested in going to see and hear from the four candidates running for the State Board of Education. It's always a great event that the ISD puts on, and it's one of the few as a county that they coordinate that effort to put this on. So, it starts at 7:30 tomorrow night, the actual question and answers with the candidates. This Wednesday, our counselors will be attending, as well as our administrators from each of our buildings, will be attending the second year of Hatching Results. Several board members might have remembered this when we were at Roseville for the county school board meeting, there was a presentation about counseling programs in schools. What Hatching Results is, is it's helping look at what our counseling program looks like for all kids, and then how we use the council board to target interventions for kids that specifically need it. So, this is the second year of a three-year commitment. So myself and the administrators and the counselors will be attending this Wednesday. October 6th, which should be before our next board meeting, is the class of 24 inductees to the Academic Hall of Fame and the Athletic Hall of Fame. It begins at 1:30. For more information about it, you can click on this district's website, or the About Us or the whole webpage, including this year's nominees and their names. They were announced June last year, so if you forgot who's announced, you can go there. Just want to follow up for that dual enrollment that our student reps talked about. For any parent who's not familiar with dual enrollment, I would encourage you to go to the meeting. It is a way to get college credits paid for and earning them, and for those students that can help. Literally, if you have enough dual enrollment credits, you can start that as a true freshman. So, another way of saving money.
Brian, is it also a 13-year program? Or is that...
This one specifically about dual enrollment, in December, they will send, IAM, the current 10th graders, a letter about the early college in Macomb program, and then current 8th graders about the IAM program, the International Academy. So, those will be coming up. These are set out in the month of December. The parent meeting's usually in January, testing's around February, and the notifications in March.
The early college is the 13-year program?
Yeah. Finally, there's one legislative piece that I just want to bring to the board's attention. This Wednesday, the Senate, if you recall last year, I kind of give a time frame, around February, March, the governor found some savings in the school aid budget to a tune of about $600 million. And she had planned on using that money for a program called SOARs, S-O-A-R, Economic Development Plan. What we've since found out was the money that was previously allocated for that economic development expired, and so they wanted to remove these or move these savings for the next 10 years. Well, I do want to give a shout out to our ISD because they were the leaders in our state because they figured out where the savings came from. And it was regarding the 7% that school districts pay for retirement. If you think of it this way, the state retirement was underfunded. So, several years ago, they took all public schools and said, based on your payroll, here's your money, but you give us 7% of that back to fund the unfunded retirement. It's now funded for what they needed. So, the state is still planning on charging districts this 7% and shifting the money over to this other informant. And our RSD took the lead on this, as well as other organizations like the MEA, the superintendent's group. I mean, this was a joint effort, and they gave a lot of pushback. And if you recall, there were some hurt feelings in the budget process because many schools didn't get a per pupil increase because they gave us this one time, here's the money back. Last week, the bill to make it a permanent reduction, not the full 7%, to 7.75%, passed the 7. And this Wednesday, it is to go to the House, and it's expected to pass. And the governor has indicated that she will sign the legislation. This is huge for school district because it puts into statute that money back to local schools. And for us, Richmond, this was about $600,000 that we can get a per pupil increase, but they gave us this money back, but it was in budget, a one-time, and then we'd have to fight for this every year. So, statutorily, 7.75 has been removed, and it will now come back and stay at the district. The other piece, a part of this legislation, is back in 2000, I think it was 11 or 12, any public school employee that worked here had to make a decision whether they wanted to take 3% of their pay to stay and keep the health care in their retirement years. That also is fully funded. And so, this year, the state and their budget gave us a reimbursement, so on every public school employee who has that, they're seeing they take it out of their check and then put back. A part of this bill permanently eliminates that 3%. So, for if you take any employee in our district who are just taking, you know, figuring out what your salary is, each pay, 3% of that was being taken away to fund this. And again, it goes back to the root cause of just everything public schools have dealt with in trying to attract people to the profession and chip away, saying, oh, you've got to pay 7% of your retirement, 3% of this, and oh, by the way, you have this new class. It doesn't draw people to the profession. So, with that, knock on wood. I said that because it's supposed to pass Wednesday, and then the governor is supposed to sign it. It won't take effect until April 1st because it doesn't take effect till 90 days after the legislative session ends, ends December 33rd, so it's not going to take effect. So, it's really for fiscal year '26. So, they put a Band-Aid on it for this year, they're basically sending the money and they're turning around and sending it back to us, type of thing, and so forth. So, I think, you know, we have probably some of the top-notch people in our county, especially our finance people, if you get to know them, Paul Bodea, Chris, they know every dollar, they know the history. And if it wasn't for their leadership, and Lane Devault's leadership at the county, I don't know if we'd be in this position, so. The last thing I'll say is, as with the election that's coming up, we've always looked for things that are going to happen during lame duck. And these are some of the things that are on our radar. One is insurance costs. Currently, districts opt either have a hard cap or share the insurance cost with their employees at an 80/20. There has been push by legislators to eliminate that completely, which could potentially mean districts pick up the entire cost of insurance. That is a huge cost that we would have to bear. Every year, the hard cap goes up based on a lot of metrics and what's and so forth, but this year, it has gone up the lowest it has ever gone up since it was put in place back in 2011, and insurance costs have gone significantly. I was just meeting with Angela, our payroll benefits person, and the amount that our insurance coverage is going up, particularly with our teachers because they opt to go with Mesa. In some cases, there's a 52% increase in what they're going to pay out of pocket with the cost of that insurance. So, this isn't going to be a, it's not going to go away, and we're going to have more conversation, but depending on what legislators do during that lame duck session will determine a lot of budgetary issues. The other thing is they are looking at, and we're all kind of wondering what this is going to look like, strengthening the pension system to be able to attract individuals to the profession. There's some legislation that's pending regarding tenure reforms. Last December, they were a lot with the evaluation system, and that had been negotiated and so forth. Other parts were not taken up. One of them is standards for dismissal going from arbitrary discretion, which is currently out, to just clause, which is a higher bar if you've got that individual who you need to terminate. There's a lot of other, but we're looking at that one. The last thing, I guess, that's on the radar, Representative Colesar had introduced a bill last year, and it's probably going to come back, about having charter school transparencies to be equal to that of public schools, to identify, you know, if you're receiving public dollars that they should be able to count for, just as public schools do, where those dollars go, what they're paying employees, what contracts they have, etc.
Not a lot yet.
And so, if you aren't familiar with the transparency, just click on our website, click on the transparency icon, that's all required by law. And oftentimes, charter schools do not do most of that because they're a third-party company, not an entity like a school system. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Then we'll end. Items of interest from members of the board. Kelly?
I'll just start with Kelly. Oh, I'll start, I guess. Um, no, I think we're up here.
Candace?
Um, just one. When we get for the letters, the recommendations for the hires, sometimes they're really detailed as to what the background is of that member and what made them want to consider them for the position. Sometimes they're very vague. Is there like a protocol for that for each board?
Yep, there is a protocol, and I will, I could have Mr. Theo review of a few minutes, but there is a protocol that basically says, identify the person, what their position is, what are the strengths that have brought them, why they feel they're a good candidate, and then are your recommendations. So, there's a template that we, I wouldn't say it's a film of life, but it's basically a template we give them as a guide for the recommendations. So, we could review that to get more consistency in those letters.
Two things, I guess. I already let Sandy know, but and Mr. Wombsley know, but I'm not going to be able to make it to the MASP stuff in Lansing because I am a supervisor for elections, and they got me working early voting at the end, so I have to work early voting. And then also, I was just looking, looking back through my email, and was wondering if you had any updates, Mr. Wombsley, on, have you heard at all, or have you heard anything, or how that's going?
Yeah, in fact, we had a long conversation, Mrs. Mangoni, Mr. Gibson, Mrs. Maniac, and I, we met with the teachers. Given the timing and trying to find a teacher, finding, because we're going to order furniture for a sixth room, we are going to post for five pairs for the morning through lunch. They request that support in the classroom. They want to give up their kids, to be honest. They built a relationship, they built it. We are not at capacity, I think we're at the airport, 325s and two, but the thought is that going into next year, if the numbers hold true, we would have six sections of first grade next year. The dollar value is about the same for a person and five pairs for timing and so forth. It's not much different, but I did forget to update every person, so that will get posted by, and they believe they have three people who are interested, and they're lobbying trying to find others. The teachers were very grateful that the district recognized the need. We have a lot of kindergartners who, well over 120 kindergarten, so it's a lot of kids that have not been in a preschool setting, so that brings an added challenge to kids in school the first time, so, so, thank you for that.
Does that seem to be the trend, I have no preschool for some of these, probably these the whole year?
There were, I would say that that has a piece of, we're kind of on the tail end of that being the reason. We just drew a lot of kids, we drew kids who families typically homeschool their kids. We, a lot of resident kids who all their siblings went to other districts and they're now back here in Richmond. I was worried in July when I thought we were at 76 official registered kids ready to go, and we're now well over 120, so. I believe it's our junior class that's well over 140 kids, so our numbers are up, so.
That's if they're...
It is a very...
Long time ago.
So, a couple of things. I also did attend the conversation, I guess, with the superintendent or whatever, and it was awesome. You guys did a great job. It was a lot of really great information. And it was mentioned that you were going to try to maybe get it out there virtually. I know that you said that the letter went out, but are we going to be able to get that information out there where they can watch the, I guess, watch what happened or what was talked about or whatever?
We're trying to schedule the time to do a voiceover.
Okay.
So, they can do the slide, and I'm not familiar with how to do that.
Okay. It's just a lot of really important information, you know, that most parents should probably have, you know, here.
Because it wasn't videoed.
I know, right? No, it wasn't. So, that makes it difficult, but, okay, so that was my, I know we talked about, so that was my question about that. And then, I don't know if the student reps want to answer this, or Mr. Wombsley, but I thought I did see that there is going to be like a pumpkin, the pumpkin sale and stuff the band does. Are they still doing that?
Yes, we're still doing that. The date, man, it's all, it's all over the flyers. I want to say on 4/8, but it doesn't sound right.
5/6.
5/6, thank you.
Is it 5/6? Is it the Fifth and Sixth?
Yeah, we're still doing that, yeah, every year, right here.
And that's homecoming, but that's homecoming weekend, so it's going to be pretty busy.
It is, yes.
And then are we still doing the homecoming parades and building the floats and all of that?
Yeah. Each, each class representative, staff member is in contact with students. I can't speak for the junior class, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, Misty's all over.
Yeah, so it's going to shag them for a senior class. They're, we're keeping on top, but we're going to make sure that's definitely something to enjoy this year.
Yeah, I really have.
And sophomores have a place.
Okay. So I, I just, I really enjoyed, we went and a few of us went and visited some of the kids when they were building the float, and that was just really fun to see. So I was hoping that maybe we could maybe do that again.
That was on my list to say, are we going to do it again?
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
I'll get the addresses and everything and all.
Yeah, that was fun. Yep. Okay. Do we know if there's like a certain theme or anything yet this year?
Theme for advanced is recital, like, so twinkle stop, yellow.
Wear a really long black hoodie.
Perfect.
Thank you. Love this show.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Tracy?
Well, I heard someone yesterday say something that resonated with me, and the comment was, the truth must rise, and that sometimes we're called to make that happen if it's not happening on its own. So it's necessary for me to clarify and refute and request, all in response to some things that have been circulated recently on social media. Yes, the church that I am co-pastor of is holding a community event on September 30th beginning at 6:00 p.m. No, and this is an emphatic no, this event is not a Richmond Community Schools event. Not one staff member or board member other than myself has participated in the planning of the event. In fact, the co-pastor of the church, Reverend Newport, has been the primary lead on the entire series of these events that we do. The event is not taking place on a campus of Richmond Community Schools. It is being held at the center campus of Macomb Community College. Thoroughly reading the event flyer that this person had would have given this information, but instead, the person decided to believe hearsay and stir things up that did not warrant stirring. In order to prove what you believe to be true, the basic idea that Richmond Community Schools is hiding things from you, which is your truth, not reality, you made something up to prove your point. This choice lacks honesty and ethics, and the choice to manipulate truth to make it fit your mission is the epitome of agenda-based communication strategy. This choice is bound to harm and only, only provide more division, things that no community needs. Further, because we have grown to be, but really we have been taught to be, and some might even say groomed to be, a society where people can no longer simply disagree. We can't disagree with one another. And some people out there feel it's necessary, again, simply because we disagree, to belittle and discredit. I have to speak to this as well. The most recurring choice along these lines is to strip me of my degree that I worked hard to earn. I have my transcripts here. If anyone feels it's necessary to review, if they feel moved to look at how I did, to prove that I attended an accredited seminary for seven years and I do have a Master of Divinity degree, I have ordained standing in the local association and state conference and national setting of the denomination that I serve. The other choice that has been made is to degrade and commit libel against my employer, the church community that I am called to serve. This congregation has official standing in a national Protestant denomination. We have access to support, including legal support, from this denomination, and if it's necessary, we'll call upon it. I want to remind all that are involved in these choices, individuals who made statements and by allowing the comments to remain the moderators of a page, have committed these acts in what you believe is your safe and protected silo of a private Facebook page. As we regularly teach students and young people, social media is never totally private. Adults need to learn this as well. I have read what you wrote, even though I'm not on the page. Others in my church community have read what you wrote. These are not private but public statements, and that matters. Your comment choices are examples of libel, I believe defamation of character, and religious discrimination. Why aren't other Board of Education members places of employment brought forward? You have targeted me and my religious community and the way I live my faith conviction in the world. If the habit of attacking the workplace of Board of Education members grows to include others seated here, to what end? Get all the people to leave the board so that you can stack it with the people who you agree with? Put fear into those who are interested in running or who are running so that your chosen candidate will win? That doesn't sound like democratic process to me. And potentially tangle yourself up in legal proceedings, why? All this simply because we may or proudly do disagree on some things. If the event on the 30th does not interest you, or you may find the topic offensive, don't go. If the church that I co-pastor does not seem like what you're looking for for a spiritual home, don't attend there. If you believe that you and I would not agree on some topics and some that come before this Board of Education, okay, but it's only that, a disagreement. Freedom of thought, freedom of viewpoint, freedom of religion are still founding parts of this nation. Can we find a place and a time where we actually let it live out? And we're a community that allows freedom to breathe and not one that tries to regulate and relegate people and their thoughts and their ideologies so that we're all the same? We think the same and have the same viewpoints? Because if we only believe in that and claim that, that sameness to be utopia, we do not really believe in freedom for all at all. So my time sitting in this seat, and this is me sitting here, is not my loved ones, it's not my employers, it's not the church community that I lead. My short time here is meant to help Richmond Community Schools continue the trajectory of excellence that it is on, and that is all and that is everything that I am here to do. So let us work together to keep this as our focus and where we put our energy.
Well, I was going to follow up, and I, and that, I think Tracy said it well enough, and I'm not nearly as eloquent, nor have I ever claimed to be or hope to be as eloquent as Tracy. But what I need to say, as a board member sitting at this table, that the group of people that are part of this quote-unquote "truth and transparency" page for Richmond Schools, there is no truth in the majority of what you say on your page. And when you talk about someone's outside work, outside of this table, this is the table that we sit at for free, people. We volunteer our time to give everything we have to our community. Tracy joined us to be here for a few months till we can get through a time where we had no board member. And to be attacked personally for something that her church is putting on is mind-boggling to me. But I say to you people that are on that page and to the individual who is the administrator or what the, what the term is, your page is not welcoming. There are people that are even sitting at this table that you do not allow onto your page, yet you want to talk truth and transparency of Richmond Schools. I suggest that you attend meetings because there's nothing more transparent than what we do at this table, what our superintendent does, and to make a statement or allow a statement to be said in your page about our superintendent and his underhandedness for being part of things that Tracy's church has put on before is just ridiculous. Mr. Wamsley spoke at one of Tracy's church's events over a year ago. He was paid for his services. He gave his payment to the Richmond Education Foundation. Per his contract, when he is asked to speak or do any events outside of being superintendent, he has to give permission of the board superintendent. He did that, and every single one of us knew what he was going to do. And there are some of us board members who have attended these events because that is our right, that if it interests us, we go to it. So I ask you to please, please, if you truly believe in the great school district we have, shut your stupid page down because you're doing nothing to help Richmond Community Schools with the lies that you put out there. Shut it down. And I also suggest that you come to the conversations of the superintendent because last week, the information that was put out, only two parents showed up to get what I thought was very valuable information. Two parents. You're part of this truth and transparency page. I didn't see you here getting information. That's the stuff that you should put on your page to show what is going on, what represents you. So I just ask, shut it down, grow up, and leave people alone who are good, incredible human beings, and I'm not just speaking of Tracy at this table, but every single one of us are good human beings with outside lives and can make choices to do what we want to do outside of this board table. And the decisions we make at this table, there is nothing underhanded about what we do, ever. Thank you. Okay, next is our public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? You can come up. There is a sheet of paper. Please put your name and address down. If you would like to speak with the board president or superintendent, leave your phone number. This is not a question and answer period. You have three minutes, and I know you won't do a thing.
That's good.
You have three minutes to speak. Thank you. I'll raise my hand when you're getting close, Pat, okay? Since I don't have something to show you.
It's my understanding from looking up online that on Wednesday is prayer around the light pole day. So I was just asking if that's on schedule for our schools here and if not, fine. So I need to check something here so somebody will answer my question.
Just put your phone number. Or we can talk to you if you need anything. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to speak as, as the co-pastor of the church that has been under attack on a Richmond Community Schools page and explain that when attacks are made online, it is going to be my assumption that none of you sitting at this table had anything to do with those attacks. It would be presumptuous of me and wrong to place blame if it does not belong there. But if you all are to see comments about one another that are negative comments, no matter who they're toward, you all are a board, and even if you disagree with the comment that you see, just writing on, on that post, you know, please take this down. This is not kind. This is not the way that we want to act as adults. Because it's a bad influence for children in general. You don't have to agree or disagree with what's been said, but just taking a stand and saying, you know, let's leave people out of this, is taking the right step in making these things stop. I need people to understand that Tracy is my co-pastor, but this rise is my full-time job. That is my only job. To attack her and to attack the church messes with my livelihood. And that is not okay. And as Tracy stated, the educate to eradicate hate events are part of my job. I chose the topic. I choose the topics every time. This will be the seventh one we've done. I choose them. I interview the panelists. I set up the space. It isn't even anyone sitting on this board that's doing that. It's me. So I would ask that those of you who are on social media, if you see something negative about one another, to please just say, take it down. It's not appropriate because you're all an example by this position that you have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. There being no further business, we adjourn at 7:48 p.m.